Oh, okay.
What is the, uh?
Oh, that's. Oh.
I want to ask you.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hey, this is.
Go.
We have a night on Thursday.
Stand there as he gets one.
Yeah, that's what they just got to be up. So, yeah.
So maybe the guy who was.
He's not going to get it. Two of them still.
I saw your car. Looks like it's going to call for the media.
Yeah. It's a great night. So would obviously.
Be placed in the back getting that.
No, it's not. He's ready to talk about it.
All right. Just like general.
Really. Try to fence out. I'll have all cramming in one day.
That's sort of yours? We call it, uh, Riot, uh, era called the Brax. B-R-I-A-C-H. The Brax. Pretty cool. I'm sure it is. A little mouth.
And, yeah, we've got a really great. There's a couple chairs here they can pull to the back and there's two here behind Scott that can be pulled to the back.
Or we can move the video up first.
Right, that's it. We got crap going on sitting home and cold, so.
I can fill in for Ronnie.
Unfortunately, I have to go back to take a bit. It's not fun.
Are you going to blow it? No, I think they'll. I love it.
You're just getting the books tonight, yeah. We're not going to go over anything.
That'd be funny.
This is such a good look at.
I'm more of a pleasure.
My brother, my brother used to bring it to Christmas dinner and ask me things back.
What is she doing now?
That was the one. Stevie, yeah. He'd bring it to Christmas dinner.
Oh.
You don't want to be like commentary or anything.
Those things are what, seven hundred dollars a month?
Um, no, I think they're about seventy a month.
Is it seventy?
Seventy dollars.
Oh, that's not bad.
But she, um, she manages like twenty people. So that's why she, um. Well, I know. That's pretty awesome.
And what?
Maybe three. Yeah, three. Just for sure.
Literally.
Yeah.
I just, I just have a lot of that. We're going to be late.
Let's figure it out.
I didn't watch those second.
Four seven, isn't it?
Yes, right outside.
That's right. Trans.
And you'd get one of them chairs and move it back to Joan or just because they would see back there Joan?
They probably just pull one off the pile there.
You go ahead and do that. Do this. I didn't know, right?
Well, let's do it.
That worked out pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they can have this.
As a reference.
Congratulations.
I think that's fine. Okay.
How many years?
Yeah.
Call meeting. Roll call, please.
Zook.
Here.
Murrow.
Here.
Hoover.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Fairbairn.
Here. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, since we have a large group tonight, will you silence your cell phones? So, all right. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Sure, any one of the audience that'd like to address the council this snapshot time? Okay, moving on. Elaine.
My name's Elaine Webb. I live at three oh one Third Street Northeast and I would like to table my, um, request to be on agenda for next time because this is such a special night for Nick and we've got a lot to do, so I'll just table it for next time. Is that okay?
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. All right. Bunch of resolutions that, just purely stuff if you will. Um, first one though is a new organization, the Des Moines Metropolitan Planning Organization. There's a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Move to the second. Discussion. It, now it occurs to me, if I'm not wrong or right, that it's, you know, we kind of certain step in is epic if you would, well, not.
This is not a new one. This year pointing your representatives to the Des Moines Metro MBO. Um, you're, it's down there, I don't know, number fifteen.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Zook.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the representatives for the nine one one service board?
So moved. Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Murrow.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Your motion to approve the resolution for Metro Advisory Council.
So moved. Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Your motion to approve our representatives to the emergency management commission.
So moved.
So moved.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lawler.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Your motion to approve our representatives to the Metro Waste Authority Board.
So moved.
Seven.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Murrow.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve our agreement with the water utility and low household income assistance program?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, move to the second. Now, which one was it? Which option was it, Tammy? I've.
This is the option where if someone has applied for the water assistance through this program, we will not, um, incur delay fees or delinquent notices or shut them off if they've been approved. So that way then, even though the payment's going to take probably thirty, sixty days for us to get it, as soon as they've applied and been approved, we can shut it off and not, not incur any additional fees to those utility customers. Until payment comes.
Okay. And they apply to impact. We don't, we're not involved.
Right. We're not involved in awarding it. It, they apply directly to the impact. Impact is the one who's got the grant money from the federal government for it and so then they're spreading it out. Um, you've got to apply for the low income assistance. The steps are there. Ronnie will be able to coach anybody through it when it, when and if it is needed.
Okay.
This is so, we can be a vendor is what they call us, so that we'll be the, because we're the ones.
Selling the water.
Selling the water, yeah.
So during the application process though, we're not going to turn them off for eight if they've applied? Or how does that work?
It's not until they're approved.
Not until they're approved.
But approval, the, the note says it kind of, it happens pretty quickly. I mean, they're not going to wait thirty days. Um, I mean, if in-house.
They're going to find out by Ronnie anyway, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll know right away.
Typically Ronnie's going to be like, okay, you're late, you're late. Hey, have you heard about this program? Here, let me help you.
Similar, similar how when someone needs a payment arrangement, we immediately shut off their late fees because they're coming to us for a payment arrangement. They're coming, or when they come to council to ask for something, we already shut, we, we already do that on that.
And this went out of everybody's city bill this month, so if you didn't read all the rest of the material beside your bill, it's in here. A lot of information about what was going on.
Fed, Fed money.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yeah.
Lawler.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Warren Farms Platte survey?
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Murrow.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the Ebert model?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved. So moved.
Second. Move to the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoover.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Okay. Matt, you're a hard on the park.
All right. Matt Cleverly, two seventy First Street Northwest.
Which bet?
I am the park's director, park's director, Matt Cleverly today.
You're not going with all the rides?
I do not have, I do not own and operate the carnival.
Okay.
But, uh, so as you guys have seen in your council packets, uh, party in the park this year, June third and fourth. I have booked a carnival through Gotcha Games out of Collins, Iowa, to come and do rides and entertainment for us. Uh, after booking, the owner, who happens to be named Matt Cleverly also, uh, reached out to me and said if we book an additional day, he'll knock four grand off the total of both. So for four thousand dollars more, I can have a whole nother day of the carnival, which exceeds the amount that I can spend in one approval by me. So, uh, I won't waste too much of your time. That's what I'm asking for is approval to run the second day. They give us twenty percent back on ticket sales, so a second day would give us a better chance at recouping our cost. Uh, plus we'll be able to break up our events over the two days and spread it out, which helps me out getting everything orchestrated that if people can't come one day, they can come the next.
What was the date again?
June third and fourth.
For what, first Fridays, first Sundays, Saturday, Sunday?
Friday, Saturday.
How long, how long have these people been?
Uh, eleven years.
Do you have any idea how much the rides cost?
Uh, most rides are two to three tickets, which the tickets cost a dollar apiece. So two to three bucks, you ride the ride.
And you have the additional funds available in your budget still?
It sounded like they had a very good safety record.
Very good safety record. They are respected here. Yep.
State their very first setup of the.
Yep, will be their first event of the year, so they'll be inspected onsite through the state, so.
Have you seen the carnival before or been to it?
Uh, I have not been to it set up, but I have visited his operation off season. I actually bought tires from him, but, uh, it's small world, kind of, small world kind of thing, but, uh, I have seen his equipment outsourced, stored indoors and, uh, it's maintained very nicely.
I started to leave this on Google. At least look that far. But it seems pretty legit.
Looked like they had a lot of great rides.
Yeah, they have, uh, I'm pretty excited for this, you know. Uh, I try to make it bigger and better every time and I think a carnival will be a pretty darn cool thing.
Doing it early will be able to get it on the calendar before a lot of other cities do a lot of their stuff, so.
Yep, and, uh, you know, I just, I know that doing this, I won't have to set up the bounce houses, so, I mean, it's totally my secret agenda.
And if you've ever helped load up a bounce house the next day, you know what he's talking about.
Yeah. They also bring several fare food type, uh, food wagons and, uh, there's one mystery attraction, so I know they do some laser tag and some other stuff like that, so it could be something along those lines, but.
Would he allow additional like local vendors to come in also or not?
Yeah, if we, if we wanted to go there, yeah. Yeah, seeing as our pen and砚, we can bring in whatever we would like to.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second if we, we have approved this. Any discussion, question, comment? Roll call.
Lawler.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Murrow.
Yes.
Zook.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Next item, I tried to jump the. Organization, Mid-Idol Planning Assist, uh, Alliance for Community Development. Would you be, what, kind of like Epic to a certain degree?
Similar, I think they'll do more of the grant writing.
They do more hands-on.
Yeah.
Late September, I made a call up there and Steph just asked him, told him, I mean, he knows all about Epic and everything, but he was emphasizing that, he's the, you know, wherever we are as community and what we need, they're going to try to support that. And then if, this is a pretty big region, by the way. So, there's other stuff that may help us for whatever, you know, but they're, I didn't, so. For the, for the amount of money, I, like I told Tammy, they write two grants for us, it'll be if you want to hear, we get our money back, so I don't think it's a bad thing to try. Epic, by the way, I just want to tell you real quick, so Skender, first been new president, on the board or whatever, so Julie Skender's going to do that and Missy Horton's going to be our VP. And Bill Puffett, John Woods and I are meeting with him tomorrow because since August, I've been trying to get them to basically just grant us money, uh, as a city so that we can hire somebody to finish our certified site deal. Since we're on step two now and Julie and Missy are all coming over to get that done. So tomorrow we'll find out and then it's very interesting because a whole bunch of other people jumped on the man wagon and says, yeah, we really shouldn't be getting rid of Epic to begin with, so. Probably will survive, live along a little bit, but if we get our money and get our certified site deal, it will be plus for us. Plus for us and then, you know, if it survives, great. But I personally have talked, this, he wasn't actually got to talk to, he had somebody else telling me that. Yeah, like I said, I don't think the money's bad, but as long as we will pay, we need a grant, we're interested in this grant. To me, that'd be the number one thing because that's like a big part of what they're going to try to do. They're also, you know, interested in seminars for budgeting and that kind of stuff too. They, they might be a nice research development.
Can we even motion tonight or does that have to come in the next meeting?
Uh, I, it would be in the form of a formal resolution is what they're asking for to do in this group. So this was on tonight for you guys to tell me, yes, bring a resolution back to the next agenda.
Bring a resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Next item, which I suspect about ninety percent of you are here for. And we're all excited about that. Um, so, okay, uh, first we'll do the difference in the mayor and then we'll do the council. Focus. This is like nuts.
Yeah, all over. Done this a few times.
All right, state your name.
I, Nicholas Dean Murrow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor in Mitchellville.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor in Mitchellville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cheese. All right. Well, gotta have to give one of the words. You good?
I'm right.
Okay, Bill. I state your name.
I, Bill Roberts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of council in Mitchellville. Oh, Jesus. I'm going along. That I will. And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of council in Mitchellville, Iowa. As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
And I will wear my glasses every day.
Yeah.
Okay, Brad. Now, one line, I couldn't find a good break place in there, so. All right. I state your name.
I, Brad Calman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of council in Mitchellville.
Discharge all duties of the office of council in Mitchellville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
The more y'all are looking like you're talking to this.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody good?
Yep.
All right, uh, who's in the back? Back there. All the worst.
Eric and Mike. Oh, yeah, Adam's running. It's him tonight.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing has been, everything's good. Paul had nothing to bring, so. You're good?
Thank you. Jerry?
All right, uh, did shop the cop last week. Unfortunately, some families, uh, never showed up. So we went with five less, so twenty-five kids. Uh, we made their Christmas a little better. Uh, we spent almost four thousand dollars on them alone, so, uh, for everyone that donated, thank you. Uh, they, uh, they left happy, whole shebang, fixed us up with, uh, lunch, chicken nuggets, mac and cheese, so, uh, some of us old, older guys, they get meals too. Outside of that, we're day in, day out business. We've got the confirmation for Officer Scott to attend the Ja- January third council, or sorry, January third academy. Uh, so we'll run short for about fourteen weeks and then he'll come back out right at the start of, uh, summertime. Outside of that, we'll have the year end total numbers at the, uh, first council meeting in January.
Good. Great. Question for Jerry. Mike?
All right. Uh, four hundred and twenty-two calls so far this year. Um, same, same old, same old, uh, doing business as usual in there. Like to congratulate, congratulate everybody on the new and incoming, uh, council members, mayor and such. Uh, it'll be a, it'll be a good time, lots of things to do. Um, other than that, I'm, uh, sending a couple people to firefighter one, starting hopefully January, there's a class coming, so, uh, I'm looking forward to get them, uh, certified. That's all I got.
Matt, do you have anything else?
Yeah, a little bit. Brad, Bill, Nick, congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll clap, damn, let's do it. My hands aren't on yet. Uh, hopefully, uh, next week after the holidays get through with, uh, early, the weather looks like it's going to cooperate, I'll get the ice sprinkler in and fill. So there will be an afternoon where I have, uh, Third Street blocked right there at the, uh, intersection of Vine as I pull off that hydrant. Um, but it, couple hours and we'll be out of the way. Uh, other than that, thank you very much for approving the carnival for a second day, really looking forward to this year's, uh, events. I have a good portion of my events started with the planning process. I have dates picked, we'll have calendar coming out pretty soon, uh, so be watching for, uh, that to come up. Trivia. January fourteenth at the community center, seven o'clock. Uh, should be something on the back of the water bill and you'll see it on social media here pretty soon as well, but, uh, we're, we're looking forward to bringing that back, it'll be a good time, so. Clear calendars every other Friday through March will be up there, so, but that's all I got, guys. Thanks.
You might consider, Matt, just putting the liner in and fill in the skidmore and put some fish in it for the meantime. Fill it with your friends and get done duty out of it.
Yeah, we can just leave it up all summer for splash pad.
Alan?
Uh, we have movie after school next Wednesday. Um, the week between Christmas and New Year's, we'll have crafts and board games, historic time, every day from one to three.
All right. Bill? Well, I'd like to thank Steve for serving. How many terms have you served here?
Three.
Three. Congratulations on your retirement.
Congratulations on your retirement. I attended the Metro Waste Authority meeting last week by Zoom because of the storm, they... They didn't want everybody going out on the moon tonight, so that's how we did it, and they presented all this with a twenty-year certificate of appreciation for serving on the Metro Waste. And that's all I've got.
Nedra?
I don't have anything tonight.
Nick?
Uh, one thing, there's a new VFW post that's starting in Altoona. We just got it founded, I think, last week, and appointed some officers this week, so that'll be serving Eastern Polk County. It's the closest one we have of VFW, so... I just think that's pretty exciting, give another option for our veterans a close spot, and that's all I got.
Good.
Uh, nothing really, but, uh, I just gotta say that it hasn't always been fun. I think we got a lot done. I hope we, we continue to move forward with fixing the infrastructure, and I don't want us to come in, start cutting, and moving backwards. Keep planning, and, uh, in the twelve years I've served, there's five mayors, and I gotta say, uh...
You're really tough on mayors.
I have been, yes, I have been. I've been honest with them. Uh, but I gotta say that out of the five mayors I've served, I've probably been the fairest and most honest. Although I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Uh, Epic would have been my big news. You already called that, and we'll know more after we go through tomorrow's meeting, but that's gonna be, so I'll talk about that in a couple weeks.
Tammy?
Um, I talk at the same time. Um, I have had my nose in your budget books for the last three weeks, so you finally have them in front of you. Brad, I got one for you, so don't leave without your book. It's your Christmas material to read. We start off first thing, January first, there's a schedule in there. We'll be covering the budgets of the big ones in the, um, general fund, fire, police, uh, library, and I don't know that we'll get to parks and parks, but that's, those are the big ones that take up the most of general fund, so that's what will be hit in, um, that first meeting in January. I gave you that schedule so you can kind of see why we have to start so early. We have to have so much stuff, so many steps completed before March, and that's the first one. We are closed Friday and Monday for the holiday, we get the two days, and then we're closed New Year's Eve. So just to let everybody know, um, I think that's all I have right now in my head.
Okay. I had a meeting last Wednesday with a couple of gentlemen that are looking at some possibilities around... They're looking to do some small development, senior housing. And so they were just inqui... Making some inquiries, so hopefully that'll produce something and so forth, so... We'll go from there on that, I guess. Guess it's been my honor to serve as mayor for four years, and most of the time it hasn't been a bad gig. But, uh, thank you, Steve, for the compliment, but, you know, I figure, you know, this is a representative group, so everybody gets, you know, a say whether I agree with what your opinion is or not, you know. It's our council, so, anyway, plus I don't give a vote, you know, so anyway.
I did think of one more thing, sorry.
Okay.
I need to know...
I'll get you.
Okay.
And such, so, um, you know, it's really been pretty, this council has been really good to work with. We've all pulled pretty much the same direction, which is a benefit to the community, you know, not just to us. And I'm, I'm confident, I think, with what I know of your new council, Mr. Mayor, incoming. I don't think you're gonna do that, but we'll be down that road, so... The, if there's a plus, because it's in Tammy's backyard, the sewer project actually might get done, I don't know if they'll get the road paved, but by the end of December. But it looks like it might actually happen. They're, they're not gonna cede this fall, but, uh, it's looking a lot better than it did a week ago. So, anyway. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, or Happy Holidays, whatever works for you and so forth. Now, did Tammy ever shot at it?
Oh, I just need to...
Whatever you remember.
I need to note for the minutes that, um, Nick Murrow is now the authorized secretary on the checking and savings accounts. Mike needs to see my minutes, so I needed to make sure I spoke that aloud.
So moved.
Nope, there's no... He's automatically the person. We don't get a vote on that. That was all I had.
Okay. Anyone in the audience would like to address the council?
Don Murphy, one thirteen second Street Northwest. Just wanna alert the council, I guess, to that I'll be pushing for some sort of a sound system. I can't hear, I didn't hear ninety percent of this meeting. I heard nothing of what Mr. Lawler said. I didn't hear ninety percent of what, uh, uh, the city park said. I didn't hear the compliments back and forth. I didn't hear what Matt said when he was facing this way or like, I heard nothing of that. And, um, uh, it's the, pardon the expression, but it's shit. I wish I could hear better, but I can't, but I do want to know what's going on, so, uh, it'll have to be a good public sound system with the highs and lows, so be looking for something, folks.
Good. Thank you, Don. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move it second. We adjourn, all's okay, you say aye?
Well, I need to do, but I have one.